I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the county council meeting. Start things off with our agenda and the approval of the minutes for the August 7th meeting.
I'm going to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Second item on our agenda is a presentation by the EMS. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to have us tonight.
Yes.
My name's Kyle Briggel. I am representing the friends of Williams County EMS this evening. I have Jesse Brumall and Tommy Zuver with me. Tommy's the treasurer of our levy committee. The reason we're here tonight is to discuss our upcoming levy that's going to be on the ballot in November. We got just a quick presentation to kind of explain where we came from and where we expect to go. EMS started in our county in 1979. Prior to a actual EMS service, everything was done by the funeral homes. Started as a strictly volunteer-based system. We were self-funded, operated on funds received from billing and reimbursement, which we still operate on to this day. So it survived quite a few years. Past minimal training. We had an abundance of volunteers. A lot of volunteers. At peak, there were 11 ambulances covering Williams County. Where we're at today, extensive training, continuing education requirements, we only have two volunteer squads left. One in Eden, one in Stryker. Then we have three life squads staffed by full and part-time employees. We have one here in Bryan, one in Montpelier, and a busy hour truck that sits in Eden that covers the western part of the county. Next. So at our height, this is where we were. We had two ambulances in Bryan, two in Edgerton, two in Eden, two in Pioneer, one in Montpelier, West Unity and Stryker. Those villages that had two ambulances per village in them, it was not uncommon for them to be able to get both trucks out the door if need be. This is where we're at today. Volunteers' Truck in Stryker and Eden. Stryker Truck's usually pretty good about being in service at night. The Eden one's very sporadic. We had one in Edgerton, that was the last one to go. They were down to only like one or two people that command that truck. Again, our life squads here in Bryan at our office, Montpelier at the safety building and Life Squad 3. The Eden truck is at the state's, at the Florence Township Fire Station. When multiple calls come in, there are times when only one squad, one squad is covering the county. It's not uncommon for us to get two, three, four calls within a half hour period. We do a pretty good job now of covering them, but it keeps me awake at night of what if we can't, what happens. That honestly, that keeps me awake at night. What's increasing? Standard of care. Life squads can provide advanced life support as well as basic life support depending on the need. We say basically we are an ER on wheels. We can get the treatment, the assessments started in the field. We can start IVs, we can give medications, stuff like that, to get the process rolling for the ER. Our call volumes have went up. In early years, it was 2,000 runs a year. Now we're over 5,000. Last year, we had over 5,500. This year, we are on track to meet or top that. Like everything else in the world, cost of equipment, supplies, people skyrocketed. Gave an example last week in Edgerton that three years ago, four years ago, we could buy an ambulance, a brand-new ambulance for about $140,000. Now, just for a bare-bones ambulance, it's over 200. And that's the exact same manufacturer as what we used before. So, you know, not only that has gone up, but all our supplies, all our medications, everything has skyrocketed. What's had decreased or flatlined? You guys probably heard this from Chief Poole. The volunteers are not there anymore. Too many training requirements, people have too much going on in life. To maintain your EMT certification, you have to have 48 hours every three years to maintain. Us as paramedics, we have to have 86 hours every three years, plus certain card classes. So, if this wasn't a career for me, this would be too much for me to keep up with, with personal life, too. Reimbursements. Our reimbursements are decreasing. 60% of our patients are Medicare/Medicaid, which only covers about 20% of overall cost. We can bill Medicaid a call at like $1,100. We'll be lucky to get $125, $150 out of that call. Everything else then we have to write off. And wages. Again, same thing. Your fire department's going through. We sit kind of in a difficult place where we have Fort Wayne and Toledo on either side of us. People go into Parkview Promedicup. They can pay way more than we can. They can offer incentive bonuses, sign-on bonuses, that we just cannot compete with. So a few facts. Fact, Williams County EMS is one of the last remaining public EMS systems in the state of Ohio that is not funded by a tax levy. We belong to the Ohio EMS Chiefs Association. It's third-service EMS. It's absolutely unheard of in that group to be funded the way we are funded. We often bring up at meetings and stuff like that, and they're like, that we are still self-sufficient, they can't believe it. EMS in the state of Ohio is not considered a mandated public service like it is, like police and fire departments. Therefore, there's some funding that we cannot apply for because we are not a mandated public service. There is some legislation going through that may potentially change that in the future, but it's been a couple of years and it's still rolling its way through. All right, next slide. Oh, without a levy. Thank you for catching that before I did. EMS in Williams County, Williams County EMS is not going anywhere. We're going to have to have some decisions to make on coverage, stuff like that, should this not pass. So what we're putting on the ballot is a 3.5 mil levy that'll generate $2.9 million a year. This supports how we currently function as well as expanding coverage in the county. We would like to put a few more of those life squads on to help cover the county. It would help improve response time, help us get to places quicker. Cost for a $100,000 home is approximately $10 a month. So, it's broke down a little more in a couple of slides, but going into a levy, we're going to move to what's called soft billing system. Right now, we bill insurance, Medicare, Medicaid. Medicaid, we have to write off. Medicare, for the most part, we have to write off the balance. But insurance companies, we can go after additional, the additional funds we go after the patient. With soft billing, for residents of Williams County, your insurance is accepted as payment is full. So there will be no, nothing paid on top of what your insurance pays. Again, this is for residents of Williams County only and for runs originating within the county. We do go down into Fines County a little bit. We go to Steubank County every once in a while, so it would not, it would not be for them. They're still getting the full bill. This is just for Williams County. So just kind of an average cost. This is a base 911 call with 10 miles of transport. So we charge a base fee and then charge per loaded mile. So for a basic life support run, it's $1,150. Advanced life support 1 is $1,650 and advanced life support 2 is $1,850. And the difference between those, the advanced life support 2 are the more critical patients. They're getting more medications, they're getting airway management, they're, those are the sick of the sick. Average health insurance deductible and you're out of pocket, cost is $1,763. So for $10 a month on a $100,000 home, just one ambulance ride in a year, could cost you 10 times more than what the levy does. So what are we saying yes to? Improved coverage, improved response times. No bills after insurance for residents for 911 calls originating in the county and ensuring continued emergency medical care for our families and communities. The first point is our main driving factor. This is, this conversation has been years coming. Jim Hicks was director prior to me, and this conversation started even when he was still here. We were just kicking the ball down the court as long as we could. We didn't want to have to ask taxpayers for money, but we're to that point now. So we're out asking for support of our levy in November. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
First of all, like your fleet of vehicles that are throughout, are those pretty well up to date or are you going to need to be?
We're going to need to update. We have some ambulances that have 350,000 miles on it that are still primary trucks. We have two on order that we ordered in December of '21 that we still have not received yet. So that's going to help us out significantly, but we will need to, maybe a truck a year just till we get, till we get caught back up.
The other question I had was on your costs.
Yeah.
If I'm, if I have, let's say I have an accident and I need to be transported, just be checked out.
Yep.
So that would be a basic life support on some.
Yep.
Okay, so you would bill me $1,150. Is that?
We would bill your insurance company first.
Bill the insurance company.
So we get all our information, billing information from the hospital. We have two ladies in-house that do billing for us. They do a wonderful job at it. They will bill everything out to the insurance company. Usually takes 60 to 90 days to hear anything back from them. And then, once they do, it processes, and if there's any additional balance, it goes out to the patient, depending on what insurance they have.
So, do most insurance companies pay much of that $1,150?
If you have a commercial insurance, they usually pay a good chunk of it. If it's an auto accident, auto insurance will also kick in, too.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
And then the balance would be?
Yep.
Mine to pay.
Yep, which with the soft billing, that would disappear for county residents.
I have one.
Yes.
On this, this form here.
Yes.
Okay. How do you decide which town has, like some of them have two and some have one? How do you decide that? Because Pioneer's smaller than Montpelier, but Montpelier only has one.
So this was set up in the 70s and it was set up in '79, this, this structure, and I was born in '83. So it was before my time that this was set up. I think when they initially did it, and I, you know, can't say for 100% sure, but it's based off of where they had the highest volume of volunteers.
Okay.
Is where they put the multiple trucks.
Okay.
If you look, can you go back to July?
Pass present.
Yep. So under the past, that is the volunteers for one town. Those were the volunteers for Eden in the early 80s. The one on the right is our life squad people that we have covering the entire county. So multiple towns had volunteers like that. I mean, they had 15, 20 people that volunteered. We don't, we don't have that. Like, we have maybe four in Stryker and maybe a handful in Eden.
Okay.
That's it. So I think that was kind of the driving force behind which towns had multiple squads, which towns didn't. It's just who had the volunteers.
Oh, it's not by population?
No, no. It's just who had the volunteers at the time.
You're making me feel old. I can remember when the funeral homes used to do the runs.
Oh, gosh.
And I do remember when, I'm originally from West Unity.
Okay.
And I remember when West Unity started that, and they did have a huge number of people that were interested in, in being EMTs. And, yeah, as the commitment became more and more, the training and everything, then, yeah, the time commitment.
And what we're finding out, too, is when people come in and talk to us, their first question is, "How much do I get paid?" And, okay, "How many hours of class do I have to go through?" We tell them that and usually they're out the door. Again, I've been in, my mom was in EMS. She was in the 1979 squad. I've been around this my entire life. I'm very, very passionate about EMS in our county. We're going to do what we can do to keep this going, but I think it'd make our lives a heck of a lot easier if this passed and benefit the citizens, I feel.
You may have touched on this, but what's the alternative? Let's say this doesn't pass. What is, what is the outlook for?
Services won't be cut. The commissioners have guaranteed us that they will figure out the funding somehow, but we're not, we're not going to be able to expand our services like we would like to see. So just have some decisions on where we're going to place trucks, stuff like that.
So you're going to maintain?
Yeah, we're going to maintain. We're going to maintain.
I have a.
You done?
Yep. Oh, sorry. I should have checked with you first. I appreciate the presentation, and I realize that it's a conceptual presentation, and it certainly, I also realize that it's not for us to, what the purpose is, is information.
Yep.
So I also appreciate that. Just a thought, as a public citizen.
Yep.
Hearing this, not as a councilperson, has nothing to do with our need to approve anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner love.
Yep.
But my feedback would be, I understand, based on this presentation, that the need is due to increased training, due to standards increasing and decrease in volunteers. There's an increase in the volume of calls, apparently a couple hundred percent. There's an increase in cost of equipment and supplies, while reimbursement rates are not very good due to the population that you are getting those revenues from.
Yep.
I spent 43 years in human services. Trust me, I understand that chase.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and what you, that's the need, and what, what you want is a 3.5 mil to generate 2.9 million, which, which will cover current, which will support current operations and will expand coverage. I'm wondering if it would be helpful, I'm wondering, you don't need to answer this now, but it's, I'm wondering if it would be helpful to specify that a little bit more and communicate that in terms of, that will support our current operations of yada, 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 ba-da-da, ba-doo, ba-dee.
Yep, I get what you're saying.
And will expand hoochie, coochie, moochie-boo. Okay?
Okay.
That's technical stuff.
Okay, okay. Tommy, did you get that? Okay.
I don't expect him to put it in the paper at all. So in short, I guess, it seems as though there, if it was more, a more, I'm wondering if it wouldn't be, this is a helpful comment, this is not a criticism.
No, I, no, I appreciate.
I think it's great.
I appreciate everything.
And I would think it's even greater if you're coming to pick me up.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's when people understand the value of EMS.
Yep.
I absolutely understand that as well. But if there was a little more maybe clarity and specificity on the financial shortfall.
Yep.
Like this is where we're at, I don't think that's a bad thing to publicly put out.
Okay.
And what the levy will specifically purchase in terms of equipment and services.
Okay.
If you're already doing that, that's great, but that's my feedback based on, I know that was not your intent tonight.
Yeah.
But maybe going forward, that would be more helpful as the public hears that piece versus they just default to, "It's not that big a deal anyway, the commissioners will bail them out." No, no, no.
Yep.
No, 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 no. It's not what we said.
No.
What we said was, we'll be able possibly to maintain what we currently have that has been shrinking.
Yep, and that's a big possibly.
Yes.
So.
Yes, exactly. That's not even assured. So I think the more you can, my opinion, humble opinion actually, the more you can communicate to the public, this specific need, based on the specific financial need and service need, it may be of greater benefit, perhaps.
No, I appreciate that, and we're learning, we're on our last two councils. We're going here in Eden tonight. We've learned something different at every single one we went to. We plan on doing some public forums and open houses, stuff like that, this fall. So I, I love the information. We're going to, we're going to take this and morph it a little bit to where we're bringing the public in, we can present it maybe a little bit differently. So I really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Yep.
Sorry, I have a letter that was given to me by a resident, and it is Catherine Poole. And I'm not going to read her address because her husband's a first responder. Dear Mayor, City Council members in EMS, I am not able to attend tonight's city council meeting due to other obligations. I have a couple of questions regarding the EMS levy presentation. I know in the past that EMS, sorry, was able to obtain payments for ambulance services by offsetting taxpayers' Ohio State refunds. Are you still able to do so? And if yes, do you know what the annual revenue generated from receiving such payments is?
Okay, so we, the liquid accounts, we send them to the Ohio Attorney General's Office. Their taxes are then, I guess garnish to cover the bill. Jesse, do you know off the top of your head? I honestly don't know the revenue off the top of my head.
Honestly, like, I actually think that answer is sufficient because for me, we use that for our tax income, Attorney General's Office, and that has been wildly more successful than what we've ever been able to do internally.
Yeah, that's for us, too.
So, because they can, they have better data and addresses than everybody, so.
Well, not random, not, because I, they're always doing it with the last month. The last month, we sent, I heard around $110,000, $115,000 towards when I come to Attorney General's Office. We haven't seen payment for any of that yet. The previous month, it was, it would have been similar. I think they're receiving the $10,000 ballpark.
Okay. So 10%?
That, that can vary a lot. There's a hundred, that can vary a lot. So one month for that, someone's been sent one to receive, don't give you an idea about how much we're bringing in compared to what we're sending to them.
And that's something we, we never did before. We had some old guy that ran our collection before, and it was horrible.
Okay.
Once we went to the Attorney General's, they're, they're getting us.
The effort being made.
She's making my point to you, is that, and I appreciate that, because she's making my point, which is, this is another public person saying, "Wait, wait, wait. Last I heard, you got $2.6 billion from this entity."
Yeah.
I think it's very helpful to actually clarify what, I mean, like 10, we get about 10% of that back.
Yeah. So that was a great question, and that's.
And I want to read her last sentence.
Okay.
Because it's important. I would like to thank all first responders for their dedication and service to the community. And I also want to add, these folks were with us for a year and a half of meetings. They came every time for a girl named Tom in the planning. We had almost a 20-page contingency plan for everything, and EMS was vital in that and a lot of other agencies. The collaboration we're getting from EMS today is much different than I will tell you I've shared years past. I think that Kyle and Jesse do a phenomenal job running EMS. I, you know, I, I am hopeful in the direction that we're all communicating, the communication between Bryan Fire and the collaboration in EMS is much, much improved. So I appreciate that, and I want to say that on the record, like I appreciate you guys being there. It's always really fun to be around them. They're very fun people to be around. Jesse, I would have given you the mic, though, if you would have asked. Kyle said you.
I didn't, I didn't know.
I didn't know.
We only know one talk, so.
You were hiding. But I want to make a point to that, because I, I have had conversations with you because two, three years ago, like six years ago, collaboration, communication on a higher level than any of them was really poor. And that is improving. And I think it's because, too, we have these three individuals at the helm that, I think Chief Poole can attest. I say, "You go work out those conversations with them, and you let me know when I have to get counsel to sign some agreement, but I don't care how it works, we just want to take care of our residents." And I know you guys in that same vein do your job every day that way, too. So I do want that noted tonight.
Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for the comments and the suggestions. We'll, we'll definitely add, do some additions to our presentation, so thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck in Eden. You have a little hall over there.
I was going to say, easy one, so. Okay, moving on in our agenda, the next item on here is the hearing of public concerns. Do you have anyone? Yes, sir, please come up and state your name.
Last Friday, I had a concern about carbon monoxide in the House. Contacted the Bryan Fire Department, the dispatcher's office and the police department, and they made arrangements very quickly to get a truck out with the appropriate monitoring equipment to see whether or not I actually had that carbon monoxide problem within my home. Fortunately, it turned out that the test results from their testing were negative. I didn't have a problem. And obviously, that is a relief. Carbon monoxide can take you out without you having a second thought about the whole thing. So again, I would like to have, if it's possible, for the comments that I just made in praise made part of the, probably the interview record on that.
Chief, you will take care of that. You know, you can look and see who did that and call and put a commendation letter in. Thank you.
And again, they were very professional, very respectful, very courteous.
Thank you.
Okay. A second item. There was work done on the first fire hydrant south of High Street on Huntington Drive where they dug out around a fire hydrant. And it's been a couple of months. This ground has settled very badly. It is very rough, uneven, settling. And the only plant's growth in that refilled area are weeds. We have some excellent specimens of weeds in that. And I don't know whether it's the water department that would have to deal with something like that.
I think it was probably work at the water department, and if that's the case, then they have a separate board. This is not the venue. It's Bryan Board of Public Affairs. Or the director of VMU down there, and their next meeting is not until September 5th at 5:00.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that.
Sure.
Would you, could you scribble down the number? Or do you have it right on hand?
It's 633-6100.
Yeah, if you could write that down for me, please.
I'll have to get it to you later. I don't have enough for you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else address council? If not, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a court treasurers report.
Yes, council has been given all of the financials and bank statements for the period ended July 31st. And I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have right now or at any time.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Next item is a resolution. John, please number and read.
Resolution number 45, 2023. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates and rates determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Each year, the county auditor asks the council to pass a resolution approving the property tax rates for the coming year, 2024, and authorizing the levies to, for those rates. And to tell you that the rates are the same as they were in the prior year, have not changed, and they ask to be supported. Request to accept them.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes. And that would be approved.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
That was the last item on our agenda at this time in the go around room. Mayor?
Um, yes, I just want to remind council, your next meeting will be Tuesday, September 5th after Labor Day up here at 5:30 PM. So please make a note of that in your calendar. I know there's been a lot of discussion about Girl Named Tom, first of all. Mr. Cosmplek, thank you for volunteering. I appreciated you reaching out to Jeffrey. And those of you in attendance, thank you for coming and supporting. I will go ahead and let these folks talk a little bit as they want around the room, but I do think that, you know, we had almost 6,000 people in attendance. Everything went flawlessly. We had planned for a year and I'm just really proud of the team. I'm really grateful for the county and villages that came out with first responders, EMA, ambulance presence, just in case. You know, we had weather variables, traffic variables, people variables, and the concert was fantastic. And I've had a ton of good feedback about our community, about our downtown, about our park system, about our law enforcement, our fire personnel. So I'm just really proud of everyone that had a hand in it. Certainly, again, our three sponsors, because they made sure that that event was free. So, thank you.
Thank you. John, do you have anything for them?
I have anything else.
Mr. Dominick?
Yeah, I'll just follow that up real quick about Girl Named Tom. First of all, I want to be real clear. It was a team effort. It wasn't the parks. It wasn't one group or the other. This was all done as a team. So I'm going to read you a quick list. If I forget somebody, I'm terribly sorry about that, but I tried to make sure we had everybody on here that played a role in what we did Saturday night. First of all, our three corporate sponsors, At Lowe, Brink Company, Bard Manufacturers, Spangler Candy. The three of them continue to support us in every way they can to make Brian a place for people to come and visit. And I think again, Saturday night, we showed that we can do that. Brian Area Foundation, Project 2020 Committee, their foresight to put an amphitheater in has been questioned at times, but I think Saturday night, we showed that it is a really good venue and we hope to continue to show it as a really good venue. Brian Area Chamber of Commerce, First Presbyterian Church, Rene Isaac, the United Way of Williams County, Larry Dean, Brian Truck Lines, Ken Riker and Eric Herman helped us with sound. Jeff Dean from Dean Sound, first time we worked with Jeff, class act. I mean, they were terrific. They were here right away, Saturday morning. Any questions, concerns we had, they, they took care of them very quickly. We had a ton of people that volunteered for the event, so I want to thank all of our volunteers. Define some Pauling County EMA, Williams County EMA Director April McLean. April played a huge part in a lot of the setup, a lot of the organization, getting the supplies, materials, gators, lights. April was a huge help. 911 Director Heather Mercer, same thing. Public Safety Administrator Mike Levy had the ability to help us technology-wise, make sure that we could handle everything that was going to happen or what we thought could happen. So, so that was a huge help to us. I'm sorry that they left, but Kyle and Jesse both played a huge role on our team. The cooperation with EMS and being able to bring EMSs out and be on site and be ready to help in case anything went wrong or anybody needed anything was, was very appreciative on our end. Detective Ben Baldwin and the Mounted Sheriff's Unit played a huge role in what we did. So we're extremely happy for their help. Four County Career Center helps us with our parking lots, although our parking lots weren't overflowing like everybody thought they would be. The kids came out and they did charge $10 in their lot and we'll make a donation back to them for their efforts to help their program, purchase supplies, materials, whatever they may need. So we're very appreciative of them. Chief Dan McGee and his staff from the Montpelier Police Department, Chief Ken Jacobs from the Edgerton Police Department, Chief Tom, I will not pronounce his name.
Simzak.
Simzak. Chief Lavengood from Pioneer, JR Jones from West Unity, and Chief Steve Mendez from Stryker. We, we got help from each one of those departments and we're appreciative of that. The Brian Engineering Department helped us quite a bit with signage and things like that, so we're appreciative of that. And helped us from the Street Department with all of our barricades and barrels. I can't thank the mayor enough for everything she did, the support she provided, not only to the team, but to myself and my team over the last couple of months to be ready. So we're very appreciative of that. Chief Poole and Chief Ruski and their staff, amazing. I know Chief Ruski had some reserves, but it was great. They, they, they jumped in and they were great to work with, so we're very appreciative of that. My staff worked tirelessly the last week to get things ready, so super proud of them. They all worked Saturday night. They had a good time, so appreciative of that. Jeffrey Tangis, our Fountain City Coordinator, he's the one that originally got them. He talked to them long before they were on The Voice, so I'm very appreciative of his efforts and, you know, last year when COVID struck, it could have gone in another direction, but the mayor and Jeffrey worked very closely with their new agents. I might tell people all the time, our original contract is signed by Caleb. It's not signed by an agent. It's not signed by a marketing firm. It's signed by Caleb. So very appreciative of the work that Jeffrey put in to pull this off. And last but not least, want to thank Girl Named Tom for giving us the opportunity to showcase Brian and the Fountain City Amphitheater. They could have walked away last year and they didn't, so we're very grateful that they did. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Ruski.
I'm just going to say, did I owe to all that? The one agency that was left off there because they weren't actually in the park and I fail to think about it was, I contacted Lieutenant Ruston with the Ohio State Highway Patrol and they actually gave us extra patrol in the city while we were maintaining the park. So they did a really nice job. I heard them on the radio make several traffic stops. So like I said, thank you to all the agencies Ben mentioned and State Highway Patrol as well. Thanks.
Thank you, chief. Chief Poole?
Not going to repeat all that, but I am going to say this was an excellent opportunity for us to practice our coordinated response. Fortunately, this was a planned event, but it helps us know that we can operate together through all the different agencies regardless of what hat you wear. Did a phenomenal job and I really want to thank my part-time volunteers, everyone else. We had a really good showing that day and without their help, it would have been a whole lot more difficult to pull this off.
Thank you, chief. Up from there, okay?
That's it.
John?
Yeah, um, I thought, I thought it was an outstanding concert. It ran extremely smooth. I heard a number of comments that people felt safe and secure. I thought that was a really good comment. You don't expect to hear that in this day and age, no matter where you live. I think it helped to have that tower thing because people kept mentioning, oh, good, there's something, somebody's up there surveilling something. They didn't even care what it was. So I think that was well done and some may know, some may not. I've knew the Lickie family. We go to the same church in Archibald and I've seen them grow up and listened to them and their voices mature. It is no surprise, no surprise to me that Caleb signed the contract and that they followed through. You're talking about a family that is extremely high quality and had a very unfortunate death in Chris shortly after The Voice, but in his, in his time, not going into any of that, during that time, at the most difficult time, he gave a tremendous support to them. I'll leave it there. And I don't mean financial, more emotional and Holling is a sweetheart and a very good person. So they're, they have amazing voices and I wish them nothing but the best, but as good as they are, as talented as they are, take it times 100 as it relates to character and value.
Thank you, John. Judy?
Well, it's funny because I had a whole list here of volunteers that I wanted to say thanks, but you took care of all of it. The only other thing I would like to say is thank you to the people that attended because I noticed everyone was very considerate of everybody else. If your chair was in the way, they moved it over. People were just kind. It was so nice to see, no pushing, no yelling, no hollering. It was wonderful. And to that, I want to say thank you, Brian, Ohio, and thank you, Williams County, for showing what top-notch people we are. Also, thank you to EMS for their presentation tonight and everybody have a safe and happy Labor Day.
Thank you. Jim?
Sure. I'd like to thank the EMS for the presentation. I think no matter how it goes, taxpayers are still going to pay for that service, either levy or in, in realizing tax at that point. So I think it's important that we pass the levy. And I'd like to just echo everybody's statement, the mayor's statement, gentleman back there's statement, thank you for everything you've done. And I was there and it was impressive. So appreciate it.
Mary?
I'm going to thank the EMS as well. And I'm just basically going to diddle Ben because Ben did the best apology, or apology. Excuse me, Ben did the best thank you and also thank the citizens of Brian.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, basically I have the same thing, you know, the girl named Tom, that was, anybody that didn't make it out there Saturday night, you missed a fantastic show. And I think, you know, as John was, was mentioning, I think that shows their character. They very easily, when, when COVID hit and they had to cancel, they very easily could have said, ah, we're going to blow those guys off and we're not going to deal with them. But they came to Brian, they stood behind their word that they were going to come here and, and put on a show and they didn't give us just a sampling of what they could do. They put on a great show. And I think that it was a great, really says a lot for who they are and it really helped a lot with Brian and I think we have something to be proud of there in our amphitheater and what we've been able to do. And I think that it shows that we can put on an event like that and have very few problems at the end. And I do want to thank all those people that Ben mentioned. I, I had some listed, listed here myself, but you did a great job. I certainly don't, that one, that well. And one thing that, that all of these types of events do is they bring new people into town. And I, working where I do, I get a lot of people from a lot of different areas that work at our facility because we cover all four counties. And it, I get so proud when I hear people from other communities come up to me and go, man, that was the first time I've been in Brian in years. What a great town. You guys have really done some neat things there. And makes me pretty proud of where I live. So thank you to all of you because what you do and what some of the organizations here in town do to help us and some of, in the, some of the businesses and all of their donations and we do it as a community and we have a lot to be proud of. So thank you. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy? Yes.
Yes.